Hey, everyone. Is the ten o'clock hour. It is Tuesday, June the ninth. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the Governing Body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Kylie, would you please take role?
Supervisor Howard.
President.
Supervisor Gitlin.
Here.
Supervisor Berkowitz.
President.
Supervisor Callen. Mark Curra is absent, and Chair Hemmingson.
Here. Yeah. I do have to say Supervisor Callen has taken care of a family matter and cannot make the meeting today. So at this time, we're going to take a moment of reflection. Now if you'll all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
The Republic stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction of new employees. Do we have any?
We do not.
Okay. You. Uh, County Council, actions from both section, session.
Yes, there's one action to report. The Board voted unanimously to authorize the county to share legal counsel with the harbor. In the case of in-ray application of Pacific Corps, Clemens Renewal Corp, FERC P two zero eight two zero six two.
Thank you.
Joel, could you specify who made the motion and who made the second, please?
Um, I don't recall, actually.
Okay.
I made the motion.
Think I seconded.
Okay. You got that, Laura?
Yes.
I mean, uh, Kylie, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from Board members to the agenda. Uh, in order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must come to the attention, uh, to the, the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda. And the matter requires action before the next greater meeting with Board Supervisors. Are there any such items? Seeing none, we'll move on. Uh, we're going to receive, uh, brief reports or announcements, uh, relative to the county programs, projects, process of two by two committees, goal committees, uh, et cetera. We're going to start with Supervisor Berkowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we last met, I attended the Redwood Coast Transit Authority Meeting and Annual Workshop. We went over on how COVID nineteen long-range issues affecting our transit authority. We also went over the financial constraints and discussed the twenty twenty-one service plan. We also discussed the FY nineteen and twenty-year-to-date budgeting, allowed the draft FY twenty twenty-one RCTA budget. Also attended the LAVCO meeting where we approved the twenty twenty-one final budget and approved the twenty twenty-one staffing services contract. We also heard from staff. The executive officer provided a report of current projects, issues of interest, and pending legislation. And lastly, I care, I continue to hear from constituents and businesses about when the county will return to normal businesses where they're able to open up. Hopefully, we're going to hear a lot of that today from Dr. Raywald, and that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The very busy couple of weeks since our last meeting. First, I'd like to start with the California State Association of Counties Agricultural Natural Resource Committee, which I'm co-chairing this year. We had a great deal of discussions about a potential water bond that the Assembly is currently consider floating this year in November. Eduardo Garcia, Assembly Member from San Bernardino County, is the one currently considering and pushing that. It was a hotly debated topic amongst the Natural Resource Committee, given that bonding capacity may be limited in the state this year, especially for water bonds. Also had a great deal of discussion around fire capacity this year and maybe some state retraction of funding that was committed last year for dealing with fire. And that, of course, is a concern, as you know, that there are already some fires burning here in the state. And how to properly address that issue going into what we may believe is a, is a going to be a large fire season this year. How, how that's gonna help with limited funding. Attended a first five family commission meeting where we discussed various transfers of budgetary items, because there hasn't been a lot of expenditures, especially on travel, and how to best utilize those resources going forward and maybe focusing in on some currents that, concerns that we're seeing, which Heather Snow highlighted at our last meeting around potential violence around children that isn't being reported currently. As Health and Human Services reported last time, there's been about a thirty-plus percent drop in normal reporting levels to Health and Human Services around child abuse, which seemed a little unusual. So trying to figure out how we could support services, especially for our children in these tough times. Spent a great deal of time with Trevor Kincaid from the United Nations High Commission on Refugees in preparation for the proclamation that is on our agenda today. And then also had a conference call with Rikizan talking to Japan on that similar issue and some working on this coming year's prospective trip that will take over with their Harvest Festival in November. Also attended a California State Association of Counties Board Meeting where state budget issues were at the top of our agenda and pretty much monopolized the discussions for the entire two hours that we were on, especially the one point seven billion dollar budget shortfall right near, right now, which is impacting most everyone. I've also spent a great deal of time with Senator McGuire's office, CAO Serena, and CSAC on some of the budget cuts that are coming around prisons. As many of you are probably already aware, the governor has slated potentially two prisons for closure in the state of California this year. Some of those are being targeted towards the end of his term. There's been no specific mention of any individual prison, but what we do know is that he does want to move forward with some closures here before the end of his terms up, and it's causing a, a great deal of concern and also a lot of rumors around the county. So definitely trying to get on top of that right now. Had a, another CSAC lobbying meeting with Senator Mike McGuire, where we discussed hits to the state budget, which was pretty much the focus, and then additional fundings that we hope see come directly to the counties. Attended with Supervisor Hemmingson, Natural Resource Schools Committee Meeting, where CAO Serena brought to our attention an opportunity to get to work on the one point five mile trip trail around Point St. George, which would be an excellent venue for our community to help serve our vacationing folks. In addition, uh, some of the language that Taylor Carsley and Heidi Kungstall presented around the Department of Water Resources draft small water supplier for rural community plans and how some of that potential policy is shaping up going forward this year. Attended a local Transportation Commission Meeting. Wanted to announce that their Del Norte Transportation Commission every year funds the economic profile through Chico State, and that was just released recently. Thank you for Tamara for continuing to, to help the Transportation Commission and the county and the city provide this critical data that we need to monitor our, our economic profile here in the county. We also discussed issues, continued issues around Elk Valley Crossroad, and in addition, the extension of a contract for our Executive Director, Tamara Layton. Did an interview, not an interview, but I read a story, as I believe Supervisor Hemmingson will be doing the same at the request of the local Planning Council. They're going to be doing this summer story hour, which will run from June fifteenth through June nineteenth from four to five in the evenings. I, they approached many local leaders and asked to read stories for our children in those hours here in the coming week. And glad to be part of that effort. Also attended the Del Norte Scholarship Banquet via Zoom Conference, and it was great to see seventy-six of our young local youth receiving scholarships. It's a proud moment for, for many of them, and they handed over three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in scholarships to our local youth. Thank you to our business community and all our supporters to our local youth for continuing to make our local banquet and scholarships available to our youth so frequent every year. Also attended the Del Norte Unified School District Board Meeting where they brought back for discussion, surprisingly, the issue of potentially doing a school bond in November. As the Board is aware, um, this could put up potential effects on the considerations that we have with the City of Crescent City on doing a public safety bond. And if there were two bonds potentially on the agenda or on the voter ballot in November, it could be, it, it could be very difficult to have support for two, let alone one. So hopefully, a two by two by two between the city, the county, and the school district to have some discussion on how best this would move forward needs to happen. And I know a survey is going out to that nature at this time. And then, um, lastly, I wanted to congratulate my son Bryce Howard, who will be graduating this week on Friday with his class for achieving some great goals, but more importantly, being a salutatorian this year. It's an amazing step, Bryce. Very proud of you. Your family's very proud of you, and congratulations on your acceptance to UC Davis and look forward to you following in your mom and dad's footsteps. And that's the end of my report, Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you. Supervisor Gitlin.
Yes, thank you. Well, I'll try not to be too repetitive, but yes, indeed, our Del Norte Local Transportation Commission met last week and discussed the extension of agreement for the Executive Director. But another area of discussion was one ninety-nine. And the common theme of all two common speed-related traffic accidents along one ninety-nine. Speed is and continues to be a vexing problem. All regulated signage, as we all know, is fifty-five miles per hour, or in some cases, sixty-five miles per hour. But when you observe signs for a lower speed, in some cases, twenty to twenty-five miles per hour, there, there are advisement or recommendation-only signs. And will most, uh, they're not mandated, per se. The colors of the signs indicate that. So I've asked our Transportation Commission to invite Caltrans staff to address how the advisement signage can be changed to regulated signage. It's a cumbersome process, indeed, involved in specific engineering studies, but one in which traffic safety on this very challenging one ninety-nine route can be improved. And as was mentioned, the Del Norte County Local Transportation Commission met last week. The Commission continued a public hearing on improving the Del Norte Fairgrounds Recreation and Parks Municipal Service Review and District Sphere of Influence Update. LAVCO also approved and adopted its twenty twenty-one budget. It's about ninety thousand dollars and a little bit over ninety thousand dollars, slight increase over last year's budget. A job well done. Also, our Redwood Coast Transit Authority met May twenty-ninth, and we conducted our annual workshop discussion, which included the following areas. COVID nineteen long-range plan issues of pre-COVID financial constraints, post-COVID twenty twenty-one service plan, upcoming twenty twenty-one project previews, and the RCTA technology challenges, which are considerable. I attended a teleconference entitled Getting Ready for Fire Season Twenty Twenty, presented by Commissioner Court Voice from Curry County. It's disheartening to hear that the fire prevention funding has been cut by over eight percent. Well, a panel of fire professionals from Siskiyou National Forest, the U.S. Forest Service Northwest Region, Gold Beach Fire, Southwest Oregon District Fire District, and CFPA, and the Oregon Department of Fire confirmed the roles of how to address, not if, but when the inevitable fire breaks out. And of course, fire does not recognize state boundary. Del Norte County and all California partners will be there to assist and coordinate fire suppression activity in a well-organized mutual aid agreement. I met with several and spoke with several residents of Wonderstump Road, which are very interested to learn the draft report, which show, we'll be discussing in a short time later in this meeting. It's called the Draft Report Summary of Wonderstump Road Community and Stakeholder Engagement. And we'll be discussing that, and the folks will be listening online as to what will take place on Wonderstump. The COVID nineteen issue virus shared the news with some recent demonstrations of protest regarding the tragic death of Minnesota resident George Floyd. Those, this issue was not, per se, a local issue. There were many who exercised their right to assemble on Highway one oh one and near the fairgrounds and expressed their First Amendment rights for free speech. Many of those demonstrating wore facial masks, many did not, which brings to the attention of the community the recent public health change in policy for those entering stores or restaurants or among people within six feet of one another must wear protective masks or face covering. I've observed a lack of enforcement on the latest edict from the Public Health Office. Some stores enforce the matter, some did not. So I see a lack of consistency in adhering to, adhering to this requirement. And I wonder, with only two cases, all non-hospitalized, why restrictions are becoming more severe and cumbersome to comply with. It's disturbing to learn through a report and the triplicate the District Attorney has promised to prosecute under threat of fine or jail those individuals who are cited for non-compliance of any violation of the public health officers' orders, which include violation of mask protocol. This selective hardliner enforcement is, enforcement does not win the support of the majority of the community, and I believe is excessive. So I question the selective lack of enforcement on county ordinance and state laws, many of which are felony cases, and failure to prosecute while other public health orders are elevated to a higher level of enforcement. Our community is hurting. Many are struggling to find ways to survive and face with this type of adversity, many will just give up. Curry County reports two cases and none since May twenty-sixth. I have a press release and indicates that there's virtually no activity. The five cases have recovered and they're back in to the community, which is great news for our neighbor across the state line. There's been only one new COVID case in the last ten days in Humboldt County, as reported by Channel twenty-three News last night. The four COVID-related deaths are also somewhat suspect. All four deaths were sourced to one assisted-living facility, and the ages of three of the decedents were ninety-six, ninety-seven, and a hundred and one years, respectively. The age of the fourth case was not reported. I also remind Curry County is open and generating important transient tax revenue, while Del Norte County remains mired in bureaucratic red tape and desperate for revenue. Many of our businesses will not reopen again, hurting city and county revenue streams. Also, the reports of COVID activity are not being updated on a daily basis. It's extremely relevant that the public know that there are only two active COVID nineteen cases in Del Norte, and forty-five other individuals have recovered and returned to the community. If the COVID nineteen numbers are indeed improving, this information would bolster the confidence in the community, and many would begin to frequent more stores and restaurants and other public gatherings, of course, in a safe and responsible manner. Del Norte's economy is damaged when motels, RVs, and short-term vacation rentals remain shuttered. As Curry County opens, I respectfully ask our Board to seek the expeditious reopening of RV, motels, and short-term rentals. The collection of transient occupancy tax, one point two million for the city, five hundred thousand dollars for the county, will generate desperately needed revenue to sustain mandated future operations. And that's my report.
Yeah, I was, uh, I was a little busy the last couple of weeks. Had a whale entanglement risk assessment group Zoom meeting, as are all the meetings that seems like anymore. Had a tri-agency meeting where we, uh, along with our regular business, had an offshore wind project presentation. I went to Eureka for, I went to Eureka. I had a North Deal meeting from Caltrans and Eureka over Zoom. Uh, we discussed a number of things. Turn pockets on one oh one from Timberline Road to Wonderstump is still in discussion. They're still looking at those. Sea level rise south of Crescent City, they're looking at, uh, at that roadway there. The COVID nineteen is impacting, uh, uh, some monies. They figure about a billion dollars shortfall in the fuel tax monies, but they're going to, uh, they have status quo on current projects. So the projects that they've got in the pipeline are, are all funded and are going to move forward, but that money may affect projects down the road. Last Chance Grade update, they're going to start the third phase of the environmental drilling in the middle of September. They're going to use helicopters in the state parks, so they're waiting for some clearance on that. They're working on a public meeting to discuss Last Chance Grade. That will be a virtual meeting. The Call Your Rest Area is now open, uh, which is a pretty important thing that's been closed off and on for the last several years. Uh, that Call Your Tunnel is still under construction. They're doing, uh, work on the ventilation system and backup power for both the rest area and for the lights in the tunnel and the fans in the tunnel. We're, had some discussion on Elk Valley Crossroad. They're doing an operational study and working on some site distance issues at the one ninety-nine and on one oh one and Elk Valley Crossroad. They're looking at some delineation and striping plans. They're doing a safety audit, uh, on one ninety-nine. They're supposed to start that in approximately six months. Uh, they did not have a finish time on that. Around Trinidad, uh, the northbound and southbound rest areas will both be closed for about a month. In about a month, four to five weeks, the northbound will be open completely and permanently, hopefully. And the southbound rest area will be closed for about a year. The Dr. Fine Bridge is on schedule to begin late in twenty twenty-one. And curve warning signs, uh, are going to be updated to the national standard. And in many cases, those, uh, curb warning signs could increase the speeds or lower the speeds depending on, uh, the national standard, what they're doing now. Uh, I attended the webinar that Jared Hetland put on. We had some discussion about direct funding for cities and counties. I also had a California Northwest Resource and Conservation Development Council meeting. Had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. I participated in the public forum. Uh, also went to the services for Paul Stroud, who was a Pearl Harbor survivor and a World War Two veteran. Uh, had some discussions with Senator McGuire's Chief of Staff about some COVID-related issues. And, uh, had some discussion about Pacific Shores, Lexington Station, uh, among other improvements at Pacific Shores with Fish and Wildlife and Coastal Commission staff, as well as, uh, community development staff. Uh, I did a gender review, and Supervisor Howard and Gitlin mentioned we had a local Transportation Commission meeting. And that is it for me. So we are going to move on now to our ten twenty-five timed item, which is public comment. And at this time, I will open it up to members of the public for comment. Let me ensure comments to three minutes. Kylie, is there any written public comment?
I have quite a few written, but one is related to COVID, and the others are Wonderstump. So I thought we'd take up the COVID comment after Raywald and the Wonderstump after that item.
Okay. That sounds absolutely perfect. Uh, is there any public comment?
Yes, give me one second.
Okay.
Joy, can you hear us?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, you are good to go.
Um, yes, I am, uh, I, my name's Joy Newhart, and I am here to talk about Wonderstump. I moved here three years ago. And one of the things that I've noticed since moving here is that people say with a point of pride that they were born and raised here and have lived here all their lives. And I haven't, but my family traveled here as a kid, and we lived in Seattle, and I had family in the Bay Area. So I traveled this stretch of highway frequently and even stayed in Crescent City shortly after the tsunami. So I have a pretty good understanding of local history. And, um, I've also traveled to other places. I've traveled to Pompeii. I've traveled to the Acropolis. And the thing that is similar with Del Norte County and the Acropolis and Pompeii is that they are world heritage sites, which means that the whole world values what, what happens here in Del Norte County. And, um, one of the things, uh, I have notes, and I'm going off my notes. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. And so anyway, uh, the whole world values these trees, and our petition has over six thousand signatures from around the world. So the world values what grows out of the ground here, and I think that that needs to be taken into consideration. I'd also, um, right now, so you have a choice. You either have a choice between protecting what the whole world values, which is Wonderstump, and the trees that grow out of the ground here. Or you can choose to save money, which is basically what the bottom line here is, right? You got a guy at the end of the street who wants, uh, who doesn't want to spend the money to fix his property because it floods all the time. You've got troubles with the street because you can't get equipment up and down it. So basically, this is about money. This isn't about anything else other than trying to deal with the money and the financial impact that Wonderstump presents. And so I'd like you to think about it in these, this term. Money or values? Money or what the whole world values? Because that's what we're up against here. Do you value what the whole world values, or is money the only thing you think about? Money or values? Money or values? The money changers or Jesus Christ? The money changers or Jesus Christ? Pick a side. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, Kylie?
Yes, give me one second.
And if you, if you're out there and you're going to speak on the Wonderstump project, that is coming up, item number eighteen. So if you'll hold your comments about Wonderstump.
Linda, you're on.
Okay. Thank you. Um, today you're going to be reading a proclamation, and I think it's a fabulous proclamation, but I do have issue with one. But I do have issue with one sentence, and that's where you start putting the sister city in with our proclamation. Um, you have three board members, Berkowitz, Cowan, and Howard, who are currently under investigation by the FPPC for several violations, and it all has to do with the sister city. They can't vote on anything with the sister city, they can't talk about, they can't anything. And I'd like to refer the council to the Silicon Valley Mayor's, um, uh, FPPC advisement letter, uh, it's dated 2014, and it was in regards to China because it's very similar to what's going on here. So I would like to see that proclamation, uh, scratch out the solidarity of the sister city because the sister city has absolutely nothing to do with what goes on in our, our county and our city. They're across the sea. Uh, secondly, I'm, I'm really surprised that the DA will prosecute non-mass compliance. Uh, I, I didn't know there was a penal code against that. Now, I didn't know that legislature passed a law in regards to that. And, uh, she loses enough cases as it is. I don't know why she'd wanna lose more with this non-compliance. And lastly, I'm really interested in learning more about these bonds because Mr. Howard was absolutely right. The school has a $25 million bond that we have to pay back. I don't think they're gonna get another one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Um, Chair, I'm not seeing any at the moment.
Okay. So, we are going to, uh, move on, uh, to our 1030 timed item, uh, to 1030 timed item, uh, which is Maggie Craft, uh, the Executive Director, uh, she's gonna give us a presentation on older adults' needs assessment.
Yes. Good morning, everybody. I'm not sure why my video not happening. Um, it's nice to see all of you. I'm not sure again why my video decided not to work. Oh, I know exactly why. Just give me one half second here.
There you are.
I know, I've got two different computers happening, and I was staring frantically at the one without the webcam, so you know how that goes. Um, it's good to see you all. Thank you for allowing us some time to report back to you regarding some of the things that we have been doing. And especially wanted to thank you, uh, in this last year for providing us a little bit of extra funding so that we could, uh, we can work on our every four-year senior survey, senior needs and concern survey. And so we've worked on that this year, and I've invited Maren Rose, who is our planner, to give you some preliminary reports, uh, report of that survey. We know we don't have a lot of time. And we will be sending you a full and complete copy for you to take a look at before we finalize it. And, and I know some information was provided to you in advance. I hope you all have that. And I also wanted, before Maren speaks, to briefly let you know in terms of COVID relief that the area agencies are receiving funds to provide, um, funds from the federal government a little bit through the Family First Act, and then significantly more through the CARES Act. The Family First Act funding is going to nutrition programs only. That would be the Del Norte Senior Center and the Humboldt Senior Resource Center, and we are working to get those funds out. Uh, so they can start using those the beginning of July. They had not needed them until now, um, because there had been extra funds from the state uh, that they had been using from, for this year, but we're coming through the end of the fiscal year, and so they're gonna be needing the Family First Fund. The caregiver, um, CARES Act funding will also be going out to them as soon as we receive it. We haven't received that yet. So I wanted to let you know that those funds are coming in to provide meals uh, to, to seniors in Del Norte. The CARES Act funding will also provide additional funding to this, uh, Del Norte Senior Center's Information Assistance Program to Family Caregiver Resource Center that provides caregiver services, and to legal services, senior legal services. And they will also be receiving additional funds to support people during this time where we're seeing, of course, older adults, uh, feeling the need to still isolate and stay safe in their homes. And we wanna provide whatever support we can to them at this time. So I just wanted to mention that that is happening. And then now I'd like to turn it over to Maren, and she'll give you a report on, on our assessment. Maren?
Hi, hi, everybody. Um, I hope you can hear me okay. I apologize in advance if I have, I have this elder cat that showed up at my house who um, has a little dementia, and he runs around and cries from time to time, so hopefully he, he won't interfere. Um, in your packet, there's a five-page abbreviated report. I pulled out some highlights for you to look at related to seniors in Del Norte County. Just some, some of the key findings that will kind of give you an idea about what, what we learned from the assessment that we did. So I, uh, we conducted three kinds of assessment. We did, um, first I took a look at the census data, the most current data that we had available on older adults, mostly 60 years and older, but in, depending on the data, whether it might have been 55 years or whatever, and, um, looked at things like, what's the percentage, how many? And, uh, basically what I found is that, uh, for our two counties, adult 60 years and older make up about 24% of the population. So yes, it has grown, and that break, breaks out to about 84% in Humboldt and, and about 16% live in Del Norte County. Um, we, I also took a look at where in Crescent City in the census designated places your older adults tend to reside. You have the majority living in the Crescent City census area. That includes the city and surrounding area, so that's about 5,000. I looked at, uh, poverty levels and, and economic security levels. And, um, so there's some information about that. About 13% of the adults uh, in Del Norte live below the federal poverty level. And earn, which means they earn about, uh, a little less than a thousand a month. The, um, Crescent City area has the highest, uh, poverty level rate. And there's some other information that you'll get. When you get the full report, there's a whole section on, uh, something called economic security. Um, the argument is that the poverty level is standardized across the nation. It doesn't take into account a, a senior's age, what their housing costs are, what their healthcare costs might be. And so UCLA came up with something called, um, an Elder Index that says there's a group of, that we would call the Hidden Poor, and that would be, oh, those older adults who are slightly above the poverty line, can't qualify for public, um, programs, but, um, ha- don't have enough money to meet their basic living needs. And so just, there's a little table there that shows a single elder living alone, which we, in both counties, have a fair percentage of our elders that do live alone. Um, that, uh, 55% of older women living in Del Norte County are, are considered economically insecure. That means that they, they may have too much money to qualify for programs, but not enough to meet their basic expenses. And when you get the full report, there's more detail on that, too, that it kind of goes into more information. Um, also renters tend to be throughout the, the state and our, our counties, the, the highest, have the highest level of what's considered economic insecurity. And Del Norte County has a fair number, 54% table, one of the tables on page two at the top says that about 54% of the renters in Del Norte County are considered, older adults are considered economically insecure. That's almost 4,000. So those are important things to know. Um, you know, providing services and targeting services for those most in need. And, uh, in terms of the disabilities in both counties, ambulatory problems which are related to our mobility such as walking, uh, lifting, um, climbing is the high, has the highest impact on both and on older adults in both counties. In Del Norte, the next one below that is independent living, and that is defined as just basically some needing help to maintain your independence. And, uh, the, the next, on the survey that we conducted, um, we looked at three main things. One was, we had a list of about 25 types of services and needs that an older adult might have. And, uh, for Del Norte County and bo- both counties, Humboldt and Del Norte, their top number one need was help with housekeeping chores and yard maintenance. You know, which is really critical to aging, you know, being able to remain independent and live in your home. Um, as you age, if you get more frail, you, you need a little extra help. You just can't do some of those things. So that's an ongoing issue. Um, for Del Norte, understanding Medicare, medical, Medi-Cal, and, uh, information and referral to cer- uh, services and resources. Also, up in the top five for both counties was preparing for natural disasters. Now, one of the things about this assessment is that, um, this was all done pre-COVID. And so things like food security didn't show up, and I would be curious if there was any way, there isn't right now, but to repeat this, it, how this might shift in terms of priorities. All right, next section is current concerns. We looked at, we just asked in terms of, um, from no concern to high concern, what, what are you most worried about? And for Del Norte, it, this, this came across the board for both counties. It also showed up in our focus groups. Available affordable daycare was just really, um, uh, one of the top-level things. It's a problem for our older adults in our two counties. It's, it's, there's no insurance for it, there aren't providers, it's inaccessible. And then below that came, um, healthcare is another big, big problem, big issue, having enough providers as well. And for Del Norte, uh, they stood out higher than, um, Humboldt on having enough money to live on. So I think in, in the research that I did, the poverty level in all groups of, types of family configuration, Del Norte County has a higher, uh, poverty level in, in all areas. And then finally, um, we asked, uh, when, when a senior does seek help, what's the biggest problem for them finding it? And most, both counties again said, I don't know who to ask. And then second came, I don't think I qualify for services. So many seniors won't even check. They just assume, well, I don't think I qualify. Or that might mean that, you know, they're confused by different programs have different requirements. So anyway, that's a summary. That's a very abbreviated, quick report for you. Um, you'll, again, as soon as our board and council, uh, finish vetting, the full report, we'll send it out to you. So, um, at this point, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. I, I do have a question on the point that you just brought up. Uh, who do they ask? Uh, and, and why, why isn't that information getting out to them? Since that seems to be an issue, who, who do they ask?
That is a, Maggie, did you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, I lo- it is, you know, it's always been a problem, and it's, it's remarkable because, um, you know, sometimes they ask their family or friends, or they, they don't know, you know, the, the senior centers have been around for, for many, many years. They provide services. Most people know they exist. We exist. We get out our senior information guide. I think it's always a challenge. I always liken it to the situation where, um, you can have all kinds of ads on television, you know, for tires or for different things, that you pretty much ignore those until you need them. And, and then if you're not thinking, people don't pay attention to what's being put out there if they don't think it's relevant to them. So, so some of the challenges is the relevancy. Um, you know, a lot of it is people don't like to ask for help. Um, you know, and they say they don't know who to ask, but part of it, the other part of it is they don't like to ask for help. Um, we, we are encouraging, uh, both Del Norte Senior Center and working with our own information assistance staff to, to just do more and more outreach, constantly outreach because people are doing perfectly fine until they're not. And then, um, and they don't often pay attention to the information when it's not relevant to them. So it's kind of figuring out how to right-time information. We all don't have unlimited funds to do constant media campaigns. And so it's, it's trying to figure out, um, you know, eh, eh, when to, you know, how people are looking. And, and one thing is reaching out to other service providers and always letting them know, hey, you know, let people know. If people don't know where to call, they should always start with their senior center or with, um, area agency on aging. Those people will always know who to refer them to. So it's just having people know that they just need to call somebody. Um, and, and often when they say they don't know, um, they don't know who to call, they, that means they just don't even try. So we're trying to encourage people to just call somebody.
Another thing I'm gonna met, uh, mention is that, uh, in the focus groups, we learned, uh, we got a lot of feedback. We did five different groups and learned that seniors are reluctant to ask for help because they fear that they're, they, they might lose their independence. Somebody might come in and take away their freedom. So what happens is they avoid, you know, until it becomes a crisis, until it's be, it becomes a situation where they just can't ignore it anymore. They, you know, so it's really, it's a challenge. That's a real challenge right there that I found really, you know, significant in the focus group feedback.
Maggie, one of the things you mentioned in this morning's Time Standard paper is ageism. Can you explain ageism and how it affects us?
Yes, um, you know, ageism is, is, is making, um, judgments or decisions about people based on their age, and it's usually in a negative way. Um, it's, you know, it's stereotyping and preconceptions. So it's assuming that, that all older people act a certain way or are a certain way. Um, you know, and it, and it, it, it's, it's one of the, um, very prevalent isms that we have that is still pretty socially acceptable. We're seeing a lot go on now all over the country and the world regarding racism, um, which, which we can see. And, um, ageism impacts people in, in incredibly negative ways as well. And certainly people of, older people of color are, are in the worst category because they are, they are hit with all kinds of stereotypes and negative, um, discrimination. Ageism in the workplace is a real thing. Um, and, you know, something that we're seeing and thinking about now is all the people in their, uh, 50s or 60s who are still working but may have, may have some health conditions that have caused them to have to step back. Or not go to work because they've lost their, their income, their jobs. Those people are in a real, real difficult situation when trying to find work again. Um, and, and it has always been a challenge for people, um, in those age groups to, to find new work. Um, but it's even more critical now because nobody can afford to not work in their 50s and early 60s. Well, I shouldn't say nobody, but most people, we all know, cannot afford that. So it's really traumatic and, and it, and with, with health insurance tied now to many people's employment, if they're not employed and they lose their health insurance and they're not able to, um, to join Medicare at that point because they're not disabled and they're not 65, we're putting a whole group of people at risk and that are, um, are going to move in, into, um, our senior population in, in, and not be prepared for it and not have the resources. So, um, and, you know, I do wanna point out that age, ageism does work in the other direction. You know, it does work when we all prejudge old, younger people and make assumptions about who they are and what they are based on their age. Um, but generally speaking, um, our society thinks that younger is better and that being young and looking young and acting young is, is the way to go. So I think we all have to challenge our own ageism and stop putting up with people making jokes. I mean, we, you know, about, about age and negatives, negative statements and stereotypes because, um, it's not helpful and it, 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 it does demean and demoralize and stigmatize a huge group of people.
Thank you.
Do you want a longer answer? That was my short answer. Did you want a long answer?
No, I think I'll read it in the Time Standard today. Anybody got anything else? Is there any public comment, Kylie, on this presentation?
I'm gonna give it just a couple seconds.
I just wanna thank the board again for the additional funding that they provided. It really helped. It, it was, uh, we definitely had to get extra funding to, to get this one done.
We appreciate what you do, so thank you very much. We appreciate what you do. So thank you very much.
Chair, I'm not seeing any.
Okay, so thank you, Gal, so much. Appreciate your presence. We're going to move on to item number sixteen, which is an update from Dr. Warren Raywell, our Public Health Officer on the COVID.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So there's quite a few things to talk about today. Hang on a second. I'm going to try and start my video. Yeah, that's better. Can you hear me well, by the way?
Yes.
So, you know, the big news was last week, the governor and the state health department released another statement for variance counties to proceed with more activity from stage three. And there's quite a long list, actually, of of stuff that could be considered. They made a recommendation not to have anything proceed before this Friday. And they're at the discretion of local health officers and health departments to decide how to proceed. So, you know, we, good news, because, you know, obviously, a lot of people in the county have been looking forward to this action of the restrictions, you know, including us. Because there's reasons to proceed forward. The problem is, it was quite a long list, and I think it would be reckless of us to try and introduce everything at once. We're still kind of trying to measure the effect of what we've reintroduced under stage two variants so far, which includes retail establishments, includes barber shops, hair salons, places of worship. You know, some of the, some of the churches in the community have not reopened. You know, we're still waiting to see the impact of that, and that's going to take some time to happen. But I, there's been some good news at the state level in terms of what they're willing to do to help us and what they're going to be doing for purposes of monitoring the situation around the state. They've been doing some new advances in their, in their modeling of how things are going to proceed. They're trying very hard to get a handle on how to measure the impact of changing things as counties open up from from the shutdown. It's very clear from from the data projections that that they had back in March and April, that the shutdown saved in early thousands and thousands of lives. There's no question about that. Now, they're just, they're trying to get a handle on how to reopen in a safe way so they don't start to force the, the, push the envelope too far, so to speak. So since we got this news, we've been thinking about this and working on it. I I came up with a list of some three basic tracks for proposed reopenings. And I've been talking this over with some, you know, members of the county administration, city management, a few other people who have an interest in seeing how this unfolds. So we're working on this. I I wish I had something definite to tell you today. I really don't. I think we need to work on this for at least a few more days. And and then I'm proposing to release something both for public consumption and for the board as members of the public later this week. I recognize that you may want to have another meeting about this, and I'd be more than happy to participate in that. We're probably going to have something pretty much in place by closing business tomorrow, I'm hopeful. And certainly by Thursday, because I'd like to be able to to get word out to the public of what needs to transpire. The problem is, I I don't foresee us being able to open everything on the list. And I just want to remind people that the list is fairly long. You know, it includes certainly things that have been mentioned already today, hotels, vacation rentals, campgrounds. Also includes outdoor recreation, galleries and museums, aquariums, zoos, family entertainment, and that includes movie theaters and bowling alleys. Also includes bars and wineries, also includes fitness facilities. You know, what what I did when I got word of this is I, I realized our own plan that we had laid out months ago for how to reopen at a local level is pretty much on the shelf now because of actions that the state has taken. But part of our planning process originally was try to, try to stratify things based on risk. And, you know, some of these are are higher risk than others, just because of the nature of what they do. And, you know, I'll use an example as a, probably everyone can understand, a bar certainly is a, is a difficult situation to control social distancing because, you know, it's common, kind of common sense that alcohol and social distance aren't going to work all that well all the time. And, you know, there are other environments that potentially could become more complicated as well. And, you know, arcade games or a movie theater, how to, how to set those up in the proper way. There's, there's guidance now from the state on how to do this, and that's really what we've been hoping for for a long time. So all these venues have some state guidance documents that are posted on the CDPH website. And that's important for people to bear in mind if they're, if they're thinking of, if they're involved in those areas of activities and they're thinking of reopening. What what our job is to do is to make sure they look at those guidance documents. And then we need to set up a schedule for this. And like I said, that's what we're working on today and tomorrow, and hopefully we'll have it, have something in place by the end of the week. I I kind of think we can move pretty quickly. You know, originally, when we set up our, our, our county-specific guidance plan that has pretty much been shelved, as I mentioned, we talked about two to four-week intervals to measure the effect of reopening things. I think we can probably stick to every two weeks to measure the effects. And I think that'll probably go okay. We're, we're, we're kind of working in a new environment now than we were two months ago because the state of California and locally, we have also done this, have stepped up contact tracing. And that's a really key measure to try and contain virus as it emerges. So this latest burst of activity that we had over the last few weeks, it's pretty much quieted down. This last week and a week and a half, we've had cases, a couple of cases show up that were related to earlier cases. We haven't had anything genuinely new show up as far as, far as I know for today. I haven't seen all of today's numbers yet, but I think that's encouraging. I think it shows that contact tracing does help, case investigation, contact tracing helps, and maybe has a, has a much bigger impact than than we really understand yet in this country, because, you know, we're just basically getting started on this in a big way and meaningful way. But the state of California is going to support us. They've helped us enroll staff at, at, here at the county level to to learn the state. And that system is up and running in several counties. We've enrolled a number of people already. We're going to be enrolling some more next week. So, you know, we're gearing up to do whatever we can to compensate for anything unforeseen about relaxing these restrictions. And that's an important thing to keep in mind, that we didn't have that ability two months ago, or even a month ago. Not in the way we do now. I mean, we stepped it up when we needed to with this outbreak. And and it was pretty amazing to watch because our nurses were doing this and teaching others to do it. At the same time, we had, we drew in a bunch of staff to help them, especially with translation. People came in on weekends, they came in on Memorial Day weekend. I mean, it was, it was full bore effort to try and and contain this outbreak. And I think it, I think it worked. I mean, the, the numbers show that the activity from this latest outbreak that we had dropped down quite dramatically. And that's going to be in place going forward. And that's, that's kind of what people need to remember. And I I really need to emphasize this again, and I'm going to keep emphasizing it over and over again, that in a contact tracing world, it really helps for people to think about contact tracing in advance. If if they are being tested for COVID nineteen and there's a pretty high chance that it's going to turn out positive, or as soon as they learn that it's positive, it would really help us if they started backtracking and thinking, well, when did I start having symptoms? And go back a couple of days before that, who was I in touch with? Who did I spend time with? What kind of circumstances would there have been where I might have handed off to someone else? Because if they're thinking of that in advance before we even call them, that just helps our job go that much easier. So that's really, the other big news is that the state is taking a new interest in in this and they're focusing on counties and our, our data as well. Some of you are probably aware that there's a county data website now that's posted through CDPH. And we actually were on that as someone, as a county of concern last week, mostly related to our case numbers from our outbreak from the previous weeks. It doesn't necessarily mean that there's anything incorrectly going, going on in the county. It just means that the state is aware of the data numbers that we're producing and they're keeping an eye on things for us. And the very first step is to actually talk to us. And they did talk to me. They, I got a call from a state CDPH official about what was going on in the county. And I told them what I thought was taking place and what it represented. And we were good to go. It does mean, though, that at some point, if things get really out of control because of relaxing restrictions and, you know, something happens in an unforeseen way, the state is also paying attention to what's going on and they could come in and offer extra resources for us, which is kind of reassuring. And they also have some expectations of how we would handle the situation. So I I think overall, it's better to have a dialogue with the state if things start going in a bad way in a, in a local jurisdiction, especially a small one like ours, rather than trying to go it alone. Because certainly the state of California, state, state CB, CDPH, state health department has a lot of resources that we could use, would benefit from. Those were the main things I want to talk about. There was one other thing that was transitioned this last week, which is our, our website got updated. Some of the data entry was a little bit slow because of that. But there's a slightly new format for it, and we're working to actually improve some data reporting going forward. So it might change its appearance again in the next week or two. But it, it does still reflect the basics of what's gone on. We've had forty-seven positive cases total. Nearly all of them are marked as inactive now. They're, they're basically considered non-infectious. Still none in the hospital. So that's a really good track record. And I think all of Delnor should be pretty proud of that. Oh, one other thing, since it brought, got brought up earlier, the masking order. I want to be clear, because I've said this on the radio, and I want to be clear before, before you guys as board members. The purpose of the masking order is to improve compliance. And the reason it's important is because the data is very, is getting clearer and clearer that it really does help prevent the transmission of virus. And everything that gets relaxed and moved back into play is going to include things like wearing masks for employees or having customers wear masks. It's just, it's just going to be the new normal for a while. In order to make sure that this goes smoothly and we don't have any backtracking where we have to go back to shelter in place, it's, it's really key that people be willing to do this. I'm, I personally am not going to be able to enforce it. I don't carry a badge. And I, I don't expect everybody to be compliant all the time. I I think that expectation is, is kind of just too far out there to to really see right now. But I do think as disease activity picks up, especially if people start getting sick enough to end up in the hospital, I think people will start to recognize that it does make sense and maybe they should. And I wanted to make it possible for those business owners who, especially if they're a solo practitioner and they're worried about getting sick from a customer coming in who's not wearing a mask. I wanted to give them a little bit of authority to be able to say, yeah, there's a public health order and there are potential if you wear a mask in my shop, or if you don't wear a mask in my shop. It just, it's just more of a way of backing up the people who are facing public, the public every day. And if we can get to ninety percent or ninety-five percent of the people wearing a mask, I mean, some people aren't going to be able to wear a mask. They're, they're medical reasons. Or they go out and they just forget to grab it. You know, there's plenty of reasons why a particular incident just may not happen right. I'm not worried about that. I just want to see as many people as possible, you know, taking the extra step of putting on a mask when they're out in public. And just to protect other, other residents of our county. And it's really that simple. It's not meant as trying to be a hardliner or, you know, calling down authority on people trying to get them arrested. I I don't want to see anybody arrested for it if possible. I just want to make sure that there's enough authority behind people's actions who, who really do depend on the public paying attention to something like this to protect them and their employees. It's mostly to to reinforce that message that it's important to preserve the safety of everybody. And and that starts a lot, in a lot of places in the business environment. So that's the purpose from it, from my perspective. And I would just like to see that compliance improve over time. And that's, that's really the goal. And I don't have anything else on my report today that I can think of. I'll be happy to take questions.
Just raise your hand, please, so I can recognize you before we, before we have any questions. And I do mean that literally. Thank you, Bob. Would you go ahead?
Sure. Dr. Reewell, of the forty-seven cases that we have here in Delnor County, have these been clustered in a certain area? And also, second question, what, what's the state expectations of us here in Delnor County?
So geographically, the majority of the cluster was in the Crescent City area. The activity of where it got transmitted may have been elsewhere. And by that, I mean, there were, as as probably everybody knows, there were a couple of staff members positive out at Pelican Bay. There were staff members at, at the hospital that were positive. There were patients positive at the hospital. There were some positive tests within some agricultural enterprises. There was, you know, there, that's just, those are just the main examples. But in general, the activity was in Crescent City. And this is supported by some other data that I haven't talked about to the, to the board yet, but I brought it up yesterday at a, at a meeting for health department staff. So I, maybe it's, it's worth talking about here. We did contract through the city, we asked the city to help us with this, to actually test for the presence of the virus in the wastewater treatment plant. And it turns out that you can do that. You can do an analysis of genetic material, traces of genetic material in wastewater. And it showed that on May sixth, we had nothing detectable. May, we had genetic material detectable to, consistent with perhaps up to two hundred cases somewhere out in the community. Our last one, we just got the report, I think, yesterday or this morning, was from the nineteenth of May. Because they're still a little bit behind on on their reporting. And that showed it had dropped down to consistent with about a hundred, hundred and twenty cases. So we think the majority of the activity was in the Crescent City area and in the surrounding areas, anything that was part of that system. It probably will not stay that way in the future. It will be scattered all throughout the county. And as things show up, we're, you know, we'll, we'll be trying to track it. One of the things we'd like to do is produce a geographical kind of overlay to our data to show people where activity is. And we're actually working on that as part of, part of the project for data reporting. I don't know how far along it is, because I'm not an IT person. But that's one of the projects that we have on deck. As far as the state expectations, you know, I think they want us to be prudent. They don't want to put the community at risk by opening up too many things too fast. I think they also want to give us some freedom to make decisions that we think are best suited to the community. And, you know, it's been brought up several times in this venue and other places, how important it is for, for this community to have a good tourist industry in the summer especially. So I'm, I'm cognizant of that. I'm not opposed to that either. My, my strategy is to try and make sure we have a balanced reintroduction of things so that we don't open up to the point that we find ourselves in dire straits two to four weeks down the road. And the problem with it has been that experience has shown with this virus that any change that you make now, the full effect you won't see for about four weeks, and maybe even longer, but at least that long. You can get early signs of it probably two weeks down the road, because that's, especially if you're doing good contact tracing, early detection of cases. If you're doing good surveillance of, of positive versus negative cases in the community, you, you catch things sooner. You speed the process up and you get earlier detection. That's one of the reasons why we brought the Verily site in is because, and I should probably mention that too while I can. The Verily testing site is a surveillance testing capacity that is basically a drive-up facility. And we should take advantage of it. I'd encourage everybody to go get tested. You know, you know, even if you don't necessarily have symptoms, if you're just want to see how it works. Because by doing surveillance, we're going to catch more people who are asymptomatic and we don't know about them. And we wouldn't know about them otherwise. And and that's important information for us, and it helps us, you know, kind of keep on top of the virus and stay ahead of it rather than trying to catch up all the time. So I think they want us to use that. They want more surveillance data for our county. They want, they want to be able to make sense of what's actually happening up here. And part of the problem is we just didn't have much activity going on. You know, if biobot data is true, that first report of zero activity meant that we were essentially at zero late April, early May in terms of what was going on. And that matched what we saw. We had three cases that showed up in the end of March, first part of April, and really very little after that. So it was, it it kind of, it kind of depends on where we go forward, what they're going to expect. I think they're, they're interested in finding out what's happening here in real time. So the It kind of depends on where we go forward, what they're going to expect. I think they're they're interested in finding out what's happening here in real time, so the more data that we can give them, the better. And that means let's utilize that testing capacity. And for us, it means doing good content.
Doctor wouldn't follow up on that. You say that we're going to be able to open up uh some more uh items uh by this Friday. What uh what are your priorities for things that we ought to open up by Friday?
Well, it's, I I don't know if I have a personal priority. I. I think uh based on the things we've talked about before and and certainly the overall of the economy for the county. I think it would be useful for us to open up uh some of our rentals. And whether we open up at full capacity or at fifty percent capacity, do it in a staged fashion, that's that we're still trying to figure out the best strategy. There are a couple of other things that I would be pretty comfortable with because I consider them to be low risk. Uh for example, uh museums, um galleries. The traffic through those facilities is pretty low and it's it's probably something that can be easily managed in terms of risk. Ocean World, the aquarium or the uh the mammal recovery center. You know, those are, uh Ocean World turned in a really great. Plan a while ago in anticipation of this, one of the best plans I've seen in the whole county. And uh you know, they're they're a one-way guided tour. I I've taken my kids there several times when when they were little. So I know how it works and I think it 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 made perfect sense to me, so I I that's a low-risk uh environment. Opening up all the bars at once, that seems like a high-risk environment. Opening up the the fitness centers are a high-risk environment and nothing against fitness centers because I. I think they're very important to people's health. But just the nature of what they do, having a bunch of people on a treadmill. Huffing and puffing and breathing, uh sharing that air for any length of time, that that's a higher-risk environment. It just is. There's just no getting around that. So we're trying to strategize to have a balanced approach, so we're not opening up too many of higher-risk things versus low risk. We we just don't want to have too much of an impact on our ability to monitor and compensate. By by doing things in a way that doesn't make sense, so that's really what we're we're reaching for here and I think we're pretty close. I mean. We've got a few more details to work out and then I'm hopeful to have something ready to go by before the end of this week, sir.
Okay, so Kylie, is there any public comment?
I have a written one and I do see someone with their hand raised. Did you want me to go with the red one first or?
I'm sorry, I didn't see her.
I my my mic was on. Are you going to go back to the board for additional comments and questions? Are you moving on to public? Because I did have a few questions to ask Dr. Raywalk.
I did not see your hand raised. I moved on to public comment. Kylie, do you have? Do you have the, go ahead and read the public comment.
Okay, the public comment is from Wendy Wrinkle. Wrinkle, I think is how you say her last name. I'm not sure. I apologize if I mispronounce that. And it said, I would like to know when the local parks in town will be reopened. I often see kids jumping the fence at the skate park and using it. I have two boys. Age thirteen who know how to social distance and would love to start using this park and other parks in Crescent City. I would also like to know when Airbnbs will be allowed to open back up. We obviously should be doing this soon with only two active COVID cases in Delmar County. And that was the written one that I had.
Okay, and then you have somebody that's uh. Let's raise their hand.
Yes, I have two. Give me just a sec. Linda, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Okay. So um. There's a couple of things I I have questions about and I don't know if I can get answered or not, but you mentioned that there um. Well, first off, I'd like to say there's several strains of the COVID nineteen. And um. And so these COVID nineteen uh people who've been tested positive, did they have the Nova COVID nineteen or did they have another strain? That is common with the flu and also you made a statement something to the effect of um. You found strain in in the wastewater treatment plant of COVID nineteen? I'd like to know more about that and uh the fitness centers up in Brookings have been open since May and um they have not. Uh had any more COVID nineteen uh cases up here. And as far as the rentals go, I will tell you one thing is that the rentals. I don't know how they clean their their rentals after people have stayed in them, but I would rather go to a hotel than a rental. So these are all things that need to be talked about. That's all I got for from listening to you folks. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Kylie, is uh can we have the other person?
Yes. We just one second. Thomas, you just need to unmute your mic and you're good to go.
It looks like uh you're not going to be able to hear me.
Oh, we can barely hear you. It's very, it's very light.
Okay, I guess I need to upgrade my uh. Edition of Zoom. If you can hear me, my comment would be that Supervisor Gitlin. Seems to be really well-informed as to the COVID nineteen status in the community. I see his involvement more than really anybody else's. I would just be interested in hearing his comments uh at this point, if you could hear me. Were you able to hear that?
I can hear you, Mr. Barnes.
Okay, I would be interested in hearing your comments, Supervisor Gitlin. Thank you.
Kylie, is there anything else?
Um, I am not seeing any.
Okay, uh Dr. Raywalk, uh any of those questions that you want to address that were brought up in in public?
Uh sure, the issue of strains of virus, you know, we don't do genomic testing. That capacity is being developed around the state. There is some interest to to do some genomic testing monitoring, but mostly in places where there's a lot of disease activity. So right now, that's not something we're doing in Delmar County. Testing for the virus in uh in wastewater is just testing for virus that it that's excreted from the body through normal bodily functions. So it it really is kind of a strange and kind of offbeat kind of way of thinking about monitoring it, but it does work. It's actually been. Been used quite widely uh around the country and and there are several companies that are now doing this and. It it it's not uh doesn't substitute for anything else. It's just sort of an add-on. So it just tells us that there were people who were sick with this and were part of the picture uh at the time. And I think it's a valuable tool. I hope we can keep using it for a while.
Okay, thank you. And Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, uh can you hear me, Dr. Raywalk?
I sure can.
Thank you. Uh first of all, I'm encouraged by uh your report. I have a series of three questions and I just want to state. That all of the observations that I'm making from this explosion of new cases. Have all been go home, recuperate for twelve days, fourteen days. And come back and you're back in the community and that's in the case of at least forty-five cases. And we have two active cases. So my question number one would be. Can we expect a daily report from your office on the COVID numbers? I know the last one was Friday and then it was uh you had some. I T issues and can we expect a daily report? That would be question number one, then I'll go on to two after you respond.
Well, we're best to make a daily report. Um it kind of depends on our staffing ability on a weekend and. You know, sometimes when the need arises, we're in there working pretty hard doing contact tracing, but this last weekend. I did not go into the office. Uh I don't really update the report anyway. But, you know, we'll make every effort to keep it up to date. We we do monitor the the input, so we're aware of any new cases, positive or negative every day of the week. But whether we are able to post it every day, uh we'll make our best effort and and that's.
I appreciate that. Uh so much is important on the information you give to the community. And we're bolstered by this encouraging news that there are so few cases here, in this case too. And I think this would actually add to an incentive for many people to start to frequent more. Recently reopened establishments, whether it's a restaurant or um um a retail store, so. When we see that there are only two active cases, that to me and to the people. Who are out there watching these figures, that's encouraging news, so that's why I asked that you'll do this on a daily basis. Now, my second question has to do with the process of reopening our county. Uh it's obviously slow, slower than most of us would like. It's tedious and sometimes it's fraught with no shortage of red tape. So how can you, as the public address officer, address and streamline the problem so businesses can start expeditiously?
Well, you know, we've, we came up with a a means of businesses to kind of do a self-assessment. And in the middle of that, uh we got into stage two variants and now they're bringing items from stage three into stage two at state level. And the state has taken the position that they are going to produce guidance documents and that everything that can be opened needs to be associated with the guidance document for that particular industry industry. So there's. Guidance documents for family entertainment, for zoos, for bars and wineries, for restaurants. Uh everything that has come out in the last month, uh the state has taken an interest in putting out guidance so that people. Have something to draw on as they come up with their own, you know, individual reopening plan. It really is up to the individual owner. So what we've done is we've tried to make it fairly streamlined. We we provide this. Business real guidance document, which is, it's kind, we call it a checklist because there's lots of boxes to check off and people just say, we've done this, we've done this, we've done this. We've asked that they provide a little bit better documentation and and a lot of people have turned in some policy statements about what they're going to do for various. Parts of their business and we've looked at those things and and for the most part, they've been fine, you know. I spent a good pu- portion of time last weekend reviewing a bunch of them that I had on in paper form and I. I checked off a bunch as being, you know, these these look good. We're ready to approve them. So what what happens is when people go through that first step of doing the business checklist, so to speak, the business approval plan. They can self-certify. They can apply for a document from the health department showing that they've done that and they put that in their window. And then when we've had a chance to look everything over and we think that it's fairly complete and it looks good to us. We send out word in that we'll send them a second document that shows that they can post something in their window that says the health department has reviewed these plans and and approves of them. And that's really is, we're trying to keep it that simple. You know, this last week we had a meeting about trying to improve it and fine-tune it a little bit and make it even simpler. And we're going to be meeting again to. To keep this process going because it's, it it is changing. It's kind of evolving. We're we're trying to keep it as simple as possible. But we also have an interest in making sure people understand all the key components of what they need to put in place to run their business safely. And lots, a lot of that's being driven now by the expertise at the state level and it's contained in those guidance documents. So if anybody really wants to know how they should proceed, if they're still uncertain, that's the first place to check and and it's fairly easy to find on the website.
Well, my last question has to do with the this so-called asymptomatic dilemma, I'll call it. I asked you the question before. If I'm feeling great, which I'm feeling great now, how do I know that I have the COVID virus unless I go get tested? So I could only find one example of um asymptomatic conditions which people can relate to, which is MRSA. For those of you who are not familiar with that, it's a Staphylococcal skin disease passed from. Someone's skin and in hits on and in comes in contact with someone else and it's tr- transferred to other objects or our people. So I'm I'm just perplexed by this. I'm not sick. I don't feel well, but I might have the. Uh symptoms of the COVID nineteen. How does one determine if one is sick? And since we only have two cases in our county. Again, non-hospitalized and no deaths. Is the restrictions that you're the messenger leaving down for us justified in wreaking this kind of economic chaos? Under which so many of our citizens are suffering?
Well, I'm not sure which restrictions you're referring to. If you're talking about wearing a mask, I'd say yes, we should. Because as I pointed out many times at a, this this is, this transmission of a virus of this type is a personal thing. It goes from one person to another, one way or another. Either you breathe someone else's uh cough or sneeze or they are sitting next to you, talking to you without a mask on for too long and you just get. The virus passed to you by just normal breath of air. Or they sneeze on something that you touch and you rub your eyes or your nose and you get it that way, but it's person to person. So at a personal level, that's where the real transmission stops. Everything else is designed. To take away those opportunities for personal-to-person transmission, so. You know, people can't go to basketball games anymore because, you know. That's where you have crowds shouting and screaming and sitting next to each other and if anyone's sick in there, there's going to be a lot of other people who are going to leave sick because they've been infected. So it at a personal level is where it starts and where it really should end and that's why we talk about, you know, just assume that you could be sick. And you're right, you can't know and and I I don't think that it's uh so-called uh asymptomatic. I would disagree with that statement. It is. There there's very clear evidence that asymptomatic transmission takes place. It it it's becoming a bigger issue, especially in in places like skilled nursing facilities or acute care hospitals. And they've moved to more universal source control where people wear masks all the time now, even if they're not in clinical work. Just because that chance that someone will walk in before they realize they've been infected. Before they're having symptoms or they're one of the lucky young, healthy people who are never really going to have symptoms, but they still could be spreading the virus. And, you know, you mentioned MRSA. MRSA is kind of a interesting comparison. MRSA. Transmission is usually from people who are carriers and they carry it for a long time. It gets colonized in their nose. That's typically the way it's done. And if they rub their nose with their finger and they shake hands with someone, they could transmit MRSA to them on their skin. But that's a chronic state of carrying something. That's, this is a little different. This is more like uh. You know, you you're feeling a little bit achy, maybe you don't have cold symptoms or a flu symptoms. You've kind of brushed it off. But you are, if you're coming down with the flu, you could very well be spreading flu virus at that same time. So it's not, it's not really an uncommon phenomenon among respiratory infections. It's just that we're identifying it this at this time as being very important because if you're asymptomatic and you don't take precautions. That's when you're most likely to cause a problem by spreading it unknowingly. So it's important and I I'm, you know, I don't think anyone who is following this virus or working in this field is going to. Say otherwise at this point. I mean, it's pretty clear, especially from what we learned during this outbreak that we had that we were monitoring. You know, I was going in most days and watching what the nurses were doing and hearing their reports and. And learning the the details of the cases that we were discovering and and quite. When we sent them in to be tested, they were positive. They were asymptomatic. But their exposure timing suggested that they should be symptomatic. They'd been exposed three, four, five days before. We said, you know, let's just test you just to make sure and lo and behold, they were positive. So it does really happen. I I have no doubt about that, so it's an important point for everybody to remember.
Dr. Reewell, the restrictions I was referring to, not necessarily the masking, which I actually support the protocol that you put forward. I think it makes good sense. It makes common sense to do that, but. Just for instance, a restriction on RV parks. People are basically coming up here and they're looking for a place in their own little toed-upon little home. Bring in their trailer, their RV. It's their self-contained. Now, certainly masking protocol can exist uh with this format. Where people keep their distances or when they go out in public, but within their own little home per se. They're causing no, there's no threat there. Yet the RV parks remain, well, let me finish my point and then you can respond. The RV parks remain closed and I'll use in a good example of someone in. Close to us couldn't find a place to put their RV here in Crescent City. They went up to Brookings and. Uh Curry County and the transient occupancy tax was beneficial to them, so there is a business factor involved here. And I'd like to see about some of these uh protocols of every two weeks, we're going to reevaluate this. Every two weeks, we're going to reevaluate, maybe sooner. Perhaps accelerated so that RV parks can be um put in into opened up into some degree. Because I don't see, unless you want to point it out to me, the threat of someone coming up here in their RV. Uh and then keeping their social distance once they walk out the front door of that RV. Please comment.
I actually agree with you and I've I've said it before. I I consider an RV in- encampment, an RV park to be a pretty low-risk environment. And, you know, like I said, it's the the effort statewide was to shut down opportunities for transmission. And I just talked about how important it is to make sure the personal transmission barriers are in place. But at the statewide level, they wanted to shut down all opportunities for transmission and that's why the order went into effect. And it was to prevent a calamity. And it was to prevent a calamity and, you know, I, there are always going to be skeptics about what could have happened, what should have happened, what might have happened. There's a question in my mind or in the, in the minds of public health people who've been following this that if those measures hadn't taken place, we would have had thousands and thousands and thousands of people die in California. So we are in the process right now, even as we speak, of looking at how to relax this. And yeah, I, I foresee that we're able to, to open up for RV parks pretty soon. Uh, we're just trying to, like I mentioned in my report, we're just trying to put the finishing touches on this over the next day or two and we'll hopefully have something ready to go before the end of the week.
Well, good luck to you, sir. We'll support you as best we can in expeditiously opening up some of these areas and hopefully in shorter rather than the longer timeframes. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Has anybody got anything else?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I just, um, wanted to thank Dr. Raywald and his staff and more importantly, the staff of the county for trying to do a very difficult balancing act. Obviously, the doctor and his staff are getting hit from both ends of this. And I know it's difficult as guidelines continue to come down from the state on short notice to react to that in a very short period of time to balance, obviously, an economy that's based on a lot of summer traffic with the health needs of our community. I, I can appreciate what you're going through and I suspect most of the board can. Just wanted to say thank you for all your efforts, Doctor.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, uh, Dr. Raywald, I'd like to echo those, uh, those thoughts. Uh, and thank you for educating us, uh, on, uh, from your expertise to those who think they're experts. Um, uh, we really appreciate that and keep up the good work. I know it's, uh, it's not fun, uh, probably not very rewarding, uh, other than the fact that, uh, we're trying to save lives. So appreciate it and thank you very much for your report. Any other, uh, comments?
Chair, I am having, uh, another public comment. Somebody has their hand raised. Um, are you okay with me?
Yeah.
Joy, you are on.
Uh, thank you very much. My question about the RV parks is shared bathrooms. Um, if you're, if, you know, I did a lot of those campings and those shared bathrooms are, I don't understand how you can disqualify the shared bathroom aspect of the RV parks. Thank you.
Dr. Raywald, you want to address that?
Sure. Well, it kind of depends on the individual owner, what their approach is. Uh, some of the, you know, a lot of the RV parks have been turning in business plans for reopening, kind of in anticipation of all this. Some of them are not gonna, they're going to deny use of that for short-term stay. Um, all of them, I think, are including increased cleaning and more regular sanitizing. And some of them are closing bathrooms and showers down regularly during the day just to do that. Uh, you know, is it perfect? I don't know if it's, if there's a way to make it perfectly safe, but all those efforts are going to make a difference. I can guarantee that. And that's the key thing is that people take those efforts to make their, their space that they're offering to the public as safe as possible. And as long as they're doing that, that's the best we can expect.
Okay. Again, thank you, Dr. Raywald. Appreciate everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Ready to move on? Kylie? We're going to move on to the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'd like to put out item number six for additional discussion, item number six. Thank you.
Okay. Get a second to the motion.
I'll second that.
A second to the motion. Uh, go ahead, Supervisor Gitlin, with your questions about item number six.
Yes, um, and I'm going to respond to, um, um, Citizens Sutter, re- referring to the Political Reform Act. Um, there's a case, and it's been brought to my attention from May 9th, 2014. Um, and it addresses this issue of several mayors going over to, um, China and then having to report that in. And I'll, I'll, I'll just give you the, the bottom line of the, the question had to be asked. Any, are payments for travel lodging assistance made to the mayors participating in the Silicon Valley Mayor's China trip in June of 2014 subject to, um, gift limits? And the conclusion that came up from this, and I'd like to share this with you because I I'd like to share the conclusion because I think there's a conflict of interest here. And
Well, that's a first, that's the conflict. That's not up to you.
It, Mr. Chairman, this is relevant to this. Okay, you're, you're going to argue and interrupt me anyway, so it doesn't really matter. There's a significant FPPC violation involved with 28710. Now, you want to ignore that and just gloss it over, go ahead and do that, but there has to be a change in
I'm not glossing over anything. Still with the
Gave me the chair. I thought you gave me the speaking, the opportunity to address need without interrupt.
Speaking ability to go off on a tangent that has nothing to do with this proclamation.
It has everything to do with this issue. And you're ignoring that and you're doing it arbitrarily. So you want to argue with me? You've got the gavel and you can do that. I'm just saying to you, there has to be a change in the resolution that is being presented before this board in a few moments. And you're ignoring that. It shows me just ex- extreme sublime ignorance of what is relative to this. That's up to the individual. What if the individual doesn't know they're in violation of 28710 FPPC code? Is that important to know, Mr. Chairman? So again, I have some issues with the proclamation. Okay, now you can speak after interrupting me. Go ahead.
What is it that you want to do with item number six?
I told you that I wanted to read the relevance.
Item number six, do you want to?
As mentioned, a public official who receives gifts of $440 or more may have a financial conflict of interest under the Act 87100 as part of the FCC code, the FPPC, FPPC code, excuse me. So I think that's important to share with the members who are about to vote on this.
I, I, I don't get your point.
Uh, I know.
But I, I have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment?
Okay.
Yes, there is. Give me one second.
Okay.
Linda, you are on. You just got to unmute your mic.
Yes, um, Chair Hemmingson, um, there is only one thing that needs to be changed in that proclamation and that's the part where they include the sister city as part of the insolidarity, solidarity, I can't pronounce the word. Because otherwise you've got three board members who are already under investigation for these very violations of the FPPC Act. And you're, now you're going to have a complaint lodged against you for ignoring it when you've been educated on it. So you just need to change that sentence. It needs to be taken out of the proclamation. That's what Mr. Gitlin is trying to say and that is going to be reported to the FPPC. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
I apologize that there is some confusion for the public and for one of our supervisors. As one of our supervisors should be keenly aware, because of his complaints lodged against fellow board members with the FPPC, most of those complaints are run around, as Ms. Sutter suggested, financial contributions and linkages. Um, this is a proclamation not specific to Rikuzentakata. It is a proclamation honoring World Refugee Day. A request which came from Rikuzentakata to join in solidarity with them in honoring it and lighting their ipan mats, the one pine tree left in our lighthouse at the same time. There's no financial benefit which these FPPC guidelines that Ms. Sutter and, and Supervisor Gitlin bring forward. I could see no financial connection. I could see no connection to Supervisor Berkowitz, Supervisor Cowan, or Supervisor Howard, myself, from passing a proclamation. And if Ms. Sutter or Supervisor Gitlin wanted to try to lobby the FPPC that there's a connection financially for us passing a proclamation in solidarity with our sister city, then they certainly by all means should do so. But, uh, this, to my point, is strictly a proclamation to honor a very important day recognized around the world for the last 20 years to honor refugees, especially a specific refugee community here in Delmar County.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond to Mr. Howard's statement. Um, Mr. Howard, I have no issue. I support World Refugee Day. I think it's a wonderful, eh, eh, tradition. We should keep it going. But don't sit here and tell this audience there's no economic connection. You want Japan to come and invest in Delmar County. I agree with that. And you've been paid for that. You've been, you've been supported in that endeavor. I am of the opinion, this paragraph indicating solidarity with the sister city of Rikuzentakata, Japan, um, in recognition of this June 20th World Refugee Day is a very good thing, except you should, in my opinion, eliminate that proclamation in that particular paragraph. And then I'm fine with full enthusiastic 100% support of World Refugee Day.
So, um, you know, as I stated earlier, the conflict would be with those people that think they have a conflict. Supervisor Gitlin, uh, I'm assuming does not have a conflict with the proclamation, but seems to be pointing the finger at other supervisors. Uh, that's very disappointing and he needs to educate himself just a little bit, I think. So we've got a motion and a second. Any further public comment, Kylie?
Yes, give me one second. Thomas, you are on.
Okay, you probably are having trouble hearing me again. I probably are going to tell me that my, uh, voice is low, but if you can hear me a little bit, please acknowledge that.
I can hear you.
Okay, I just want to, I'm, I'm just going to make a general comment about the conduct of the board, the conduct of the chair towards other board members, board members. Look, it, it's obvious and it has been obvious forever that there's a lot of dissension on this board. And the dissension basically comes from the chair of the board, uh, and two other members directed towards Supervisor Gitlin and Supervisor Berkowitz. Look, if you guys cannot learn, and I'm, I'm really addressing this to Supervisor Hemmingson, Howard, and Lori Cowan, who is not there. If you guys cannot learn how to conduct yourself properly and with manners and respect towards your other board members and the community, you should all be removed from the Board of Supervisors. It's absolutely disgusting conduct and appalling conduct. Are, are you not more mature than this? Can you not act in adult fashions? You know, we need good representation from this board to represent this community. And this disgusting infighting and disrespect is, is not going to be tolerated. Please do whatever you need to do to conduct yourselves in professional manners towards each other. And when a board member like Roger Gitlin is recognized to speak, let him speak. Or don't recognize him if you think that's what you should do. But please quit this disgusting conduct. You're an embarrassment to this community. That's all I have to say.
Kylie, any other public comment?
Yes, give me just one second. Joy, you're on.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to point out that I live in Roger Gitlin's district. I do not support him. He was not re-elected. There's a reason for that. Thank you.
Kylie, any other public comment?
Um, I am not seeing any at this time.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We've gone through public comment. Uh, Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
And just for the consent agenda items excluding number six, correct? Or is number six included?
No, no, there's no exclusion of item number six. That was not, that was not taken off the consent agenda. It was pulled for discussion.
I pulled it, sir. It's a separate vote. I pulled it off for a separate vote. Do your job, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you for that Supervisor Gitlin.
I appreciate that. Please take a separate vote on six.
Okay, so we will pull that item for a separate, separate vote. Uh, Kylie, we'll pick item number six off the consent agenda for right now. Um, and we will, uh, pull the vote on the other items.
Okay, so Supervisor Gitlin.
Are we talking about the other, uh, all items?
This is the consent agenda. This is the consent agenda excluding item number six.
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz.
Yes.
Supervisor Howard.
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson.
Yes, and now we will take up item number six. I will ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second, and we've already had public comment. Um, so Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
With extreme reluctance, no.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, uh,
Chair, would you like me to read the proclamation?
Yes, I would. Uh, yeah, I've got a pro, uh, I'm going to, uh, read this proclamation, uh, to, this is a resolution, actually. Uh, this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar, State of California, honoring Thomas Burke, retiring sheriff sergeant. Whereas Thomas Burke began his law enforcement career in January of 1975 as a reserve police officer for the Crescent City Police Department. And whereas Thomas Burke attended and successfully completed the College of the Redwoods Basic Police Academy in 1978. And whereas Thomas Burke began working as a full-time police officer for the Crescent City Police Department in 1979, serving 28 years in several roles with the, with the Crescent City Police Department, including investigator, field training officer, and sergeant. And whereas Thomas Burke was hired at the Delmar County Sheriff's Office as deputy in 2007 and was promoted sergeant in 2016, remaining in that position until his retirement in May of 2020. And whereas Thomas Burke has been awarded his basic, intermediate, advanced, and supervisor certificates through the California Peace Officer Commission on peace officer standard and training. And whereas Thomas Burke is a well-decorated law enforcement officer with recognitions that include merit for good conduct, service as a bailiff, service as a field training officer, a unit citation, exemplary service as a sergeant, and the sheriff's medal. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Delmar County Board of Supervisors hereby acknowledges the diligence and dedication of Thomas Burke during his 45 years of service to the communities of Delmar County. Be it further resolved that the Delmar County Board of Supervisors expresses appreciation and best wishes to Thomas as he enjoys a much deserved retirement. Thank you, Thomas. I don't know if Thomas is on and if he would like to speak. I know the sheriff indicated that he would not be able to be on. But congratulations, uh, Thomas, on your retirement. And now we have a proclamation, Supervisor Howard, would you please read that?
Thank you, Chairman. It gives me a great pleasure to read this proclamation today of the city of Crescent City and the county of Delmar. Whereas for nearly 70 years, the United Nation High Commissioner for Refugees has provided international protection and assistance to refugees, asylum seekers, and other persons of concern and has sought durable solutions to their problems. Whereas the UN HCR helps and protects refugees and people displaced by violence, conflict, and persecution. And with its partners provides life-saving essentials, including shelter, water, food, safety, protection to survive, recover, and build a better future. And whereas the United States government has settled refugees in our community and has granted asylum to thousands of refugees from around the world who now call the United States home. Whereas refugees who live in and contribute to our communities have rebuilt their lives after fleeing conflict and persecution in their home countries for fear for their lives. And whereas refugees make critical contributions to economic growth, cultural and spiritual diversity of our community. And whereas long refugees and their families immigrated to the United States and today, over 600 long Americans call Delmar County their home. Whereas like many immigrant groups before them, long refugees settled to the United States to escape war, prosecution, to find opportunities to better their lives and the lives of their children. And whereas long Americans are helping to build a vibrant and diverse community, contributing socially, politically, and economically to our city and our county. Whereas on June twentieth, two thousand twenty, United, or two thousand, the United Nations General Assembly created World Refugee Day to recognize and honor the contributions of refugees throughout the world. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Crescent City and the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar will join in solidarity with our sister city of Rikuzentakata, Owate Prefecture, Japan, in recognizing June twentieth to be World Refugee Day. Be it further proclaimed that the City of Crescent City and the County of Delmar join the efforts to support and recognize World Refugee Day by lighting the Battery Point Lighthouse in blue lights, which symbolizes the plight of refugees around the world on June nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first, twenty twenty. Be it further proclaimed that the City of Crescent City and the County of Delmar join with more than two hundred other communities around the world in the Cities with Refugees Coalition to celebrate welcoming traditions and that we will continue to welcome and support refugees in our community as they rebuild their lives and discover their new home. Thank you, Chairman, and I do believe in our audience today, Chairman. We have Ku Bu and Pa who would be receiving this presentation. Ku and Pa, please feel free to comment at this time. Your microphone is on.
Okay, thank you. So Pa was here earlier too, but she had to go back to work, so I'm just here by myself, but thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman Hemmingson, Board members, Mrs. Serena and the administrative office. Thank you for recognizing all of us refugees, folks like myself. So first of all, due to the the current situation, our elders asked that myself and my wife accept this recognition on all of our behabs. So they wanted to be here, but they, it's a little fearful for the elders at this point. So thank you. Thank you all for for taking the time to officially recognize folks like myself. My name is Ku Bu. For those of you that don't know me yet, my family, like all of the other long families here in Crescent City, were war refugees. We left a place of familiarity and home and treading into the unknown. Coming to America today, your recognition reaffirms your caringness towards our community and all of us, and being inclusive, counting all of us in. And so. Oh, excuse me. And so your recognition of diversity and caringness toward all of us, I want to thank you. It warms all of our hearts here in Crescent City. So thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Yep, we're gonna take a few minutes break here before we go on to the rest of our agenda, so hang tight. We'll be back in just two or three minutes. Dan, I don't know if you're there. Are we ready to go? Okay, welcome back, everyone. We're gonna take up item number seventeen, which is to approve and accept the Elk Valley Crossroad Corridor Plan as complete and authorize the chair to sign the document cover as requested by the Assistant Engineer. Rosanna, there someplace? Is she gonna speak to this? Okay.
Okay, this is the Elk Valley Crossroad Multi-Mobile, or not Multi-Mobile, just Corridor Plan. And we've been working on it over the past year in coordination with the Local Transportation Commission as well as staff from Caltrans. And it spans from Lake Earl Drive to Parkway Drive and includes both state highway system and county roads. Along the county portions, which are the segments between Lake Earl Drive and one oh one and one ninety-nine and Parkway, there's alternatives for improving the paved shoulder widths to four feet or installing two-way left turn lanes or left turn pockets, depending on with time what we think might be best as we move forward beyond planning level. Within the state highway system right away, we looked at the one oh one intersection. And there's, I think, four alternatives in the document. One includes just restriping the intersection. One has some odd U-turns. It's best described by looking at the document. But a lot of merging and U-turns that probably isn't the best for our community, but it is something that's being done in other communities. We also were looking at single lane coming and going on one oh one instead of two lanes in each direction as well as a roundabout. So those are in the document. On one eighty-nine, there's simple improvements like signing and striping a traffic signal, which the document explains why that's not gonna work. And then a roundabout. These are all long-term planning processes. So this isn't, there's not money today to do anything, but it's looking at it, at what's there, getting ideas on what we can do in the future. And we've communicated with Caltrans about some of the things we found that could potentially be improved on with maintenance. And they've been responsive. So if you've been out to the one ninety-nine at Elk Valley Crossroad Intersection, you're gonna notice that the grass is mowed, and that seems pretty minor, but that improves the site distance as well as trimming the brush back to the fence line. So we've got some improvements happening under maintenance that typically wouldn't result from a planning level document. And definitely there's still room for improvement, but Caltrans is openly communicating right now with the county and the Local Transportation Commission, so we'll see where this goes beyond this document.
Yes, thank you, Rosanna. And I understand they're moving a sign. Is that right? The wrong way sign or something? They're gonna move that out of the way too?
We have made that request. Some of our requests that we thought were gonna happen haven't happened. So at this point, we think that that sign's getting moved, but I haven't seen it happen.
Yeah, okay, yeah, at the North Deal meeting, we did discuss it. It is going to happen. Don't know exactly when. So at this point, if there's no questions for Rosanna?
I have questions, Mr. Chairman. Rosanna, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Thank you. This plan here has a number of options. Now, where does this plan go once our board adopts this plan and authorizes the chair to sign the document as requested by you? What what's the next step in the protocol? What happens next? Or is it already some of the plan is being implemented as you just referred to?
So it depends on the level of improvement. If we actually start looking at these alternatives, most of them are major projects to undertake. It comes down to finding a funding source and then seeing if we can fit the funding source to an improvement that we think would be beneficial to our community. So really, it comes down to funding, and we can't get to the next step if we can't find funding. But in order to be eligible or considered or have a good case, we need this planning level document.
Absolutely. I appreciate the hard work you've done in putting this plan together. Can you guesstimate a time limit, or is that too premature?
A time limit to what?
Well, having this plan implemented, is it a funding issue only? Or do you think that there's a reasonable expectation that we can see some activity on this in the next two years? I know it's a conjecture question. I just wanted to get your sense on it.
It's a planning level document, so it could be on the shelf for twenty years, or if we found funding in five, we could start something up. There's really no telling on when anything will happen.
Okay, I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve and accept the Elk Valley Crossroad Corridor Plan as presented by the Assistant Engineer.
I have a motion.
I have a second and discussion. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say thank you to Rosanna, but more importantly, thank you to Doc and Engineering and Director Tamara Layton of the Delmar Local Transportation Commission. I know this has been a joint project between multiple agencies. And as highlighted by Rosanna, the importance of funding to implement this plan will be critical in these next steps. And most likely, as you recall, with the additional funding that has come down through SB one legislation, it's what's gonna make plans like this actually viable and possible to get these improvements into the Elk Valley Corridor. So I wanted to make sure that that was recognized, as I know various members of our board have not approved of that in the near past. However, in order to make these kind of things go, we're gonna be reliant on that type of funding in order to make those improvements. So with that consideration, Mr. Chairman, I do have my second.
Thank you. Any public comment, Kylie?
I see Tamara Layton would like to speak. I don't know if you want to include that just in public comment or just comments from her, but I'm gonna go ahead.
Good morning, good afternoon. I did drive out this morning when I received an email to take a look at the sign, the do not enter sign that has been moved, and it made more of a difference than I thought it would. So I'm pleased to report that. I am concerned about the continual mowing and maintenance mowing that will need to be maintained in that area. If you are riding in a big truck, you can see right over the grasses. If you're riding in a little Mini Cooper, you cannot. So your vehicle height, Chris, makes a big difference between how far your site distance is down that road with the grasses in consideration. So I would like for everybody to help me watch out for the site distance in that location. Snap a photo, send me an email if you have concerns about the site distance because the grasses are too tall again.
Thank you, Tamara. Any other public comment, Kylie?
Chair, I am not seeing any more at this time.
Okay, anything else from board members? Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz.
Supervisor Berkowitz, you're on mute. Sorry about that. Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number eighteen now, which is to accept the summary of Wonderstump Road Community and Stakeholder Engagement as directed or as complete and direct staff to maintain the status quo, which means we're not gonna do anything different than we've done in the past. I want to thank all those, all the public members and staff members that got engaged and went to the public meetings and submitted the public comments. We appreciate all that. But we are not going to change anything at this point on Wonderstump Road, so we'll open it up for a public comment. Kylie, you have some written public comment?
Yes, I have, I think, five or six.
Okay, why don't you go up and read those?
Okay, so the first one is from Joni Porch, and it says, I think it's pretty clear what the people want with over six thousand signatures from all over the world. I just can't see how you would even consider removing any trees from Wonderstump Road. But most importantly, there has been an outcry from the residents who live on this beautiful and pristine place of peace. Please don't take this view away from them or away from us. But I would also like to say a huge thank you to all of those who have worked so diligently to protect what is rightfully theirs. Love and blessings to all. And the next one is from Lisa Hare. And it says, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for listening to us, your constituents, and over six thousand people worldwide to maintain and preserve Wonderstump the way it is. That was why it was bought from the timber companies by a past BOS in order to save the trees from being harvested and maintain the beauty of this unique road. Now can we have some assurance that this status quo will stay in effect for good? Thank you. And I have another one from Donna Eller. It says, fifteen years ago, I moved from a big city to our home on Wonderstump only because of its unique beauty. I was a first-time newbie to county living, and it didn't take long to understand the phrase, I'm going to town. Faster than learning that phrase is me falling in love with all nature everywhere I looked. Up went the bird feeders, wind chimes, and regular trips to the beach or town, always going north so I could drive through the tree tunnel. My windows go down, the radio off, and I can walk faster than I can drive. Every single- Every single time is a different awe-inspiring experience, depending on how the sun is shining through the trees, if it's raining or foggy. Time slows, I smile, a sense of peace comes over me. I go out of my way to go that direction for these reasons. We are on the middle of the road between two islands. I have seen only a couple of tree versus car accidents due to speeding, texting, impaired driving somehow. But never was it a tree's fault. I've seen emergency vehicles going through the road without incident. Occasionally, there may be an incoming car. I actually look forward to it. It's that country feeling of either moving to the side or being the one that goes through while the other driver moves over. We smile, wave, and go on. The entire encounter may take a minute. I am proud of our road when I see tourists admiring its beauty. They also will be spending money to eat or do sightseeing. Please maintain the beautiful uniqueness of Wonderstump and leave our trees exactly where they are. We love them that way. And another one from Jeannie Retterier. I'm sorry if I pronounced that incorrectly. It says, please leave Wonderstump Road as it is. It's a quiet, nice, beautiful road. Spend the money on Last Chance Grade or Front Street. And then my last one is from a Mac Eller. And it says, it's safe to say that we, the people, have spoken on numerous occasions about how we want Wonderstump Road maintained, preserved, and protected. You, the elected supervisors, were chosen to represent us and be our voice on issues such as this. I and ninety-nine percent of the people in this neighborhood know the road is safe, yet we are confused why the county has pushed so hard for so many years to fix something that isn't broke. Is it the few extra bucks we spend to clean the ditch? The people agree it's worth it to preserve the tree canopy and aesthetics, and the probation department has agreed to supply people to clean the ditch manually, which would cost pennies on the dollar. Safety-wise, there are fewer accidents on this road compared to almost any other, and everyone knows it. I'm curious as to why someone crashes into a tree, texting, careless speeding, drunk or drunk. Yeah, the trees do not jump out in front of the car, so let's not cut them down for that reason. I remain skeptical as to your intentions, as I have been told untruths and have been misled by county officials. And I can only hope you do the right thing and make the right decisions. Only one of you has said that you will work towards a solution that is in favor of what the people along Wonderstump have vocalized. You should be trying to find solutions that we agree with, not ones we feel the need to fight. On May twenty-first, I personally submitted, and I certainly hope each of you read the two hundred and eighty-four pages containing sixty-two hundred signatures, twenty-two pages of comments, and forty-six pages of newspaper articles, all of which are overwhelmingly in support of preserving Wonderstump. Please do what is for which you are elected and ensure all of us that you will continue to work towards preserving our beautiful road and not destroy it. And that's it for written.
Okay, if there are any hands raised?
Mr. Chairman, do we have anybody? Do we have anybody from Jeff Daniels? Are you on there? Can we address him? Jeff?
Excuse me, Supervisor Gitlin, if you'll wait, please. I'm still taking public comment. Is there any more public comment, Kylie?
I see Tamara Layton has her hand raised, but I'm not sure if it's for this item or if she just forgot to lower it. I'm going to try to put her on and see.
Okay.
Yes, I did want to speak to this item. This is actually why I joined the meeting. The county took on this work. They requested funding from the Transportation Commission for this study, fully understanding that it would be difficult work. Part of, it's my hope that people who commented and signed petitions, all six thousand of them, will read the document so they understand the facts and what the county was actually looking at, rather than perhaps the chatter on Facebook. The staff recommendations to keep the status quo does honor the public input. Before this project was initiated, there was a lot of misinformation going on in the Wonderstump community area. And I really appreciate the county staff's initiating this work to put an end to some of the misinformation, try and get the facts out there, solicit public comment, and do the hard job. They, this study wasn't a requirement of them, but I think it was necessary and important work to get facts on the table. And I really appreciate that they took the initiative to do it.
Thank you, Tamara. Anything else, Kylie?
Let me just double check. I thought I seen another hand raised, but it looks like it disappeared. Chair, that's all I'm seeing at this time.
Supervisor Gitlin, you had something?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, are you on the line? Can I just have a quick word at you? Jeff Daniels? I guess he's not on. Lonnie Raymond, are you online? Well, okay, they were promising they would be, have access to them. I want to make available, the information available that the probation department and probationers with hours to burn off are very excited and happy to learn that they can burn off hours by doing some of the work that Superintendent Daniels has deployed to his own staff in keeping those culverts and gutters clear of debris and roots and trash. And this has been a good model in in helping the, some of the other departments. And hopefully, that'll save about anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars a year in precious funds from the Community Development Department Roads Division. And I'm hoping that those two parties, Jeff and Lonnie Raymond, can get together when the need rises to do additional work there. Thank you.
Chair, can I just say, I see that Jeff and Lonnie are both on, but they both have their mics muted. I'm not sure if either one wanted to address Supervisor Gitlin's questions or anything.
Okay. Anybody got anything else? Supervisor? Lonnie, you want to say something?
Sure, I was contacted by Supervisor Gitlin about this yesterday. We do manage the Community Work Service for the county, and we're happy to participate in any program that allows our offenders to complete their hours and that benefits our community.
Thank you. Jeff, did you want to say anything? Or any other board members have anything?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to reflect for a moment on Director Layton's comments. The, this was a great deal of work, not only by the Transportation Commission, but by county staff, to turn a very, a very difficult conversation to light. And Chairman, as you're aware, we we entered several public meetings that stayed civilized, where the community spoke their opinion. And I believe, as you are seeing, community, those who are listening today, that you were heard. And I hope that that course of action, with the more civil conversations that were allowed during these stakeholder group meetings, will continue to occur as we address those important problems here in our community. And with that, Chairman Hemmingson, I would like to make a motion to accept the summary of the Wonderstump Road Community and Stakeholder Engagement and direct staff to maintain the status quo.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. We'll finish with public comment. Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number nineteen, which number one is to approve the classification description for the Administrative Services Manager to direct resources to the adopted staffing chart as appropriate, appropriate to eliminate the position of Fiscal Manager. And three, establish one Administrative Services Manager position with the Administration Office as requested by the CIO.
The item before you today addresses a position that is currently not filled, which is a Fiscal Manager position. It is very much directed to just fiscal actions and duties. Whereas the Administrative Services Manager position expands duties to a number of other administrative actions, includes everything from assisting with purchasing and contracting and just the overall operations of administration. Currently, the, as I mentioned, the Fiscal Manager position is unfilled. This is basically removing that and establishing the Administrative Services Manager position in his place so that those duties can be fulfilled.
Move to approve as stated by Chair Hemmingson.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Kylie, is there any public comment?
I'm just going to give it just a couple seconds.
Okay.
And at this time, Chair, I am not seeing any.
Okay, anything else from board members? Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to budget transfers, which I see one. Item number twenty, approve and adopt the budget transfer oh six dash oh one at the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars within the agricultural budget to utilize unplanned gas tax as requested by the Agriculture Commission.
Move to approve.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any public comment, Kylie?
I am not seeing any at this time, Chair.
Thank you. Anything from board members? Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Moving on to legislative and budget issues. Jay, have we got anything?
I will be bringing forward a budget report for the next meeting that has to do with our interim spending plan before we get to the final push for the final budget back, well, it'll be in September. As far as legislative items, we are following federal legislation regarding any additional stimulus money that may come down that might assist us in regards to our budget, as well as the COVID-nineteen expenditures. And on a little bit of a self-serving note, I'd like to follow up on Supervisor Howard's comments regarding graduates this year. I know one's near and dear to his heart. My daughter is graduating from Crescent Elk this year, and I'd like to congratulate her, all the graduates in Delmar County, because this is a weird year. And it's a big deal for eighth graders and seniors alike. More for seniors than eighth graders, because the eighth graders get in the shot. But I would like to congratulate all those kids that I got to interact with the Crescent Elk when I was coaching over there, as well as in my daughter's activities. But my daughter's a salutatorian over there, much like Chris's son is. And I know we're very proud of them, and we congratulate all of them.
Yes, we're all proud of them, and congratulations to all those graduates and all those people that are moving on. Anything else from supervisor?
Well-stated, CIO.
Think nothing else. We are going to adjourn to our next meeting, June twenty-third. Thank you.